I might say.
I know.
I can't believe me. Here's the, we have a form and I might pop a meeting to order. You say pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I understand this is a request for amendment to the minutes for January 4th. Do you have a motion for that? I move that we amend section eight under public comment to the fourth paragraph, adding to the, the content of the sentence that both the individual who was, whose abatement was approved at a previous meeting, as well as the two abatement requests that evening were not notified in person that they were on the agenda. You have the proposed wording in there.
We have a second for that.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Call for vote, any call for favor?
If you're voting on that issue, fine. Sorry to interrupt.
Call for favor? Call first? It was brought to my attention by Steve Winter that the minutes also didn't accurately reflect the, his abatement requests or consistently reflect them. The first motion made was for the monetary amount of the abatement, the tax amount to be abated. The second motion, because he had two properties, the second motion reflected the value to be abated. Because it wasn't specific, I think the motions stand fine as they are because you also signed the abatement form. It says move to approve in the amount of as presented and then you sign the form. So I think it's okay, but I would caution, as I have before, like going forward, to be specific with what you are abating. Are you abating the dollar amount, the tax amount? Just to make it clearer for our records and for the tax collector who will be executing the abatement. So I think that's what Steve was going to talk about. Did you have anything to add to that?
No, just a state between two of the abatements that were for abatement of the assessed amount and one which was for an abatement of the tax bill.
Okay. Okay. You can be mindful of that. And I appreciate your help reminding us of what we need to remember. Okay. With those considerations, what is your pleasure with the consent agenda?
I move to accept it with the edits made.
Second, all the favor. The upcoming select board meeting, the next one, will be January 25th, 2024 at 5:30 and that will be the workshop with the town attorney at the West Bath Fire Hall. First item of business, we have a funding request from Tedford Housing. And we have a guest speaker. Would you give your name for the record?
Sure. My name is Andrew Lardy.
And take it away.
All right. Is this the right spot to be? Great.
Where we are comfortable.
Okay, I'm comfortable. I feel great, all right. First of all, Chair Hennessy and Selectman Anderson and Selectman Lattley, getting everybody's names close to crap, probably not. And Ms. Bullen, thank you all for taking the time to hear from me tonight. My name is Andrew Lardy. I am the Executive Director at Tedford Housing. And as you will have hopefully had a chance to review, Tedford is based in Brunswick and we are really the sole provider of homelessness prevention services and emergency shelter between Portland and Rockland. So we serve this area throughout northern Cumberland as well as Sagitt, Hockland and counties. And, you know, most of what we do from day in and day out as far as headcount and impact is homelessness prevention. People come to us who, whose rent is in arrears, who can't pay their heating bill, and we try to keep people in their house if they have it, if they're at risk of losing it. Last year, we served 320 people plus with those kinds of services, keeping them housed. If someone comes to us and they have actually lost their housing and are living in some situation that's unfit for human habitation, they're outdoors, they're in a car, they're in a trailer, then we have two shelters located in Brunswick. And those serve, one for families and one for individual adults. Last year, those, the adult shelters served 69 individuals and we turned away 463 phone calls per folk seeking shelter. Our family shelters served 44 family members, so I think 15 families. We turned away 139 calls per families, usually moms with kids looking for a place to stay. So we've known for a long time, since before this current housing crisis, that there is vastly more need in this region, in all of our towns, than Tedford can accommodate. And it's taken us a long time to grow from really small nonprofit to an organization with the muscle and the political buy-in and the fundraising skills to propose and move forward on a project to do something, to do better. We really need to just meet our mission more effectively in this region and we're leaving no stone unparented in that effort. So we have, we are seeking all the dollars from the federal government, the state government, the county, foundations, corporations, and individuals. And we have also decided to ask municipalities what is possible on the municipal side, especially in this era of occasionally unallocated American Rescue Plan funds that can make it easier to say yes and pitch into the project without actually having to raise anybody's property taxes. But we realize that conversation is different in every municipality. We are really grateful that kicking off in our kind of host town in Brunswick, they were able to present a contribution to this campaign of $200,000. Now, this organization, we take, you know, our overall budget between grants and state funding and fundraising is like $1.6 million a year, I think 1.7 last year, we're growing. We're trying to raise $8.3 million to build this building and it is a huge lift. We're going from junior varsity to varsity in a really, really big way. And we know that the need for Tedford services is widespread. And this is hard for people to understand. I concede, in any given town, on any given day, with our services spread over 40 towns and 150,000 residents, in any given, in any given town, on any given day, that impact might be small, that need, that sort of share of the services being used might be small. But we are the safety net, we are the insurance policy for every, every resident in every town. And so there is value to what Tedford provides and, sorry, I have a moment of lagging. And what's my point? Oh, just that, the, this isn't really a formulaic or a kind of algebraic approach, you know, where are this many citizens, you're this many citizens, so how about you do this fraction, right? Harpswell has a proposal on the table for a $50,000 contribution. That would make a huge difference from that town. You know, we're in conversation with BAF and Pittsburgh and we're about to start a conversation with Freeport. So we're trying to make sure we are approaching this equitably through everywhere throughout our region, kind of just radiating from our epicenter, right? And so I'm very grateful to be in front of you all tonight and have an opportunity to share a little bit about what Tedford has been, where we are headed, how it'll impact quality of life for a community. Oh, this is the thing I wanted to add. Just in November, the United Way released a report where they studied cost of living. They created this thing called a survival budget, right? Rent, gas, medical care, food, medicine, for all throughout the country. And then they calculated the, looked at the wages, not just, you know, retired people, but working families. They created this report called ALICE report. ALICE stands for, can I do this, asset limited, so not a town in the bank, income constrained, and then employed, A-L-I-C-E, ALICE, employed. And they found that in areas like, well, in West Bath in particular, 27% of the population fit into either living below the federal poverty line, which is very low bar, it's you know, $120,000 a year or thereabouts. And it's either that, that, that much struggling or in this ALICE category. So 27% of people are in this ALICE category or worse, which is not able to make ends meet even though you're working. And that's pretty much par for the whole region. You know, 20, you know, like between 25 and 35% across each of the different towns. And you can find this information on their website. I can send it to you afterward. So you don't need me to tell you that you have residents who are at options despite not making a lot of mistakes, right? But these are difficult conditions that we're presented with right now and it's our responsibility to meet more of that unmet need. And, you know, we don't want anybody to feel like they're sort of being asked for an unfair burden, but we do believe that it's going to take all of the stakeholders pitching in as much as they can to help us accelerate the completion of this project that's really going to improve quality of life for all of us and people that we love. So I'm happy to answer questions.
What's your timetable for this?
We are hoping to break ground this spring, build it in 12 months, move in between summer and fall in 2025. And the reason that there's a hoping piece of that, because we have hired our construction manager, we're about to finish that contract, we're figuring out the short-term financing piece, and we're at $6 million raised out of 8.3. But we have a big slug of federal money that's a federal earmark that Susan Collins has shepherded through the process for us. And the budget process in DC that we thought would be resolved by New Year's has, as you all know, broken down right now. And so that's the big variable is that hunk of, of the money. But we'll figure it out.
How much has she have, has allocated to that?
1.5 million.
And is the new facility, where is it going to be located?
Great question. So Tedford's new home is going to be a consolidated building that brings together our family shelter, our adult shelter, and our little admin office space, all under one roof for the first time. The focus is on expanding capacity and being efficient. We're located on Thomas Point Road, which is behind the Real Cinema Theater out there on Cook's Corner, and also on the other end behind Walmart. So we actually are adjacent to the Walmart property. And so there's a lot going on between Cook's Corner and the former Little Air Station, new development, there's a new emergency clinic up there on the corner, what do you call it, urgent care, right? MCHVP is putting the facility over there. Of course, there's the new Hannaford. So that's our spot. It's a three acre lot that we own now, free and clear. We think it's a really good location and it's been kind of an odyssey for Tedford to go from the idea that we needed to do something to this point where everybody can agree it's a good idea and we can get the approval. So it's really exciting.
And how many people will the facility service?
So this is going to be an increase in capacity overall for our two shelters by 60%. On the adult side, we're going from 16 beds, right now those 16 adults are living in bunk beds in a single-family home built in 1900, to 24 beds of all ADA accessible bed, which is really important because it's not good to be calling every day to get a bed and then find out that the bed is on the second floor and the top bunk and you have a bum leg, right? It's pretty brutal. On the family side, our current family shelter has six apartment units and now we're going to have 10 apartment units, so that's an increase of two-thirds. So this is a 64-bed facility altogether, right? It's not a warehouse, a resource center, but we think it is politically feasible, which is important. People can get behind it. And we think it's fiscally feasible for an organization that's trying to grow very rapidly. And we know that, you know, the next 15 years, we hope that the region has more facilities to do more of these kinds of things. We don't pretend that this is the solution to the housing crisis. We don't pretend that this is even the sort of solution to the demand for emergency shelters. But we know that even in 15 years, when all that phenomenal 80,000 units have been built around the state and everybody's got a warm cozy place to live, even then, there will always be moms fleeing that disaster at home. There will always be people facing all kinds of tragedies and emergency shelter is not going to go away as a piece of the safety net.
Are you at capacity right now?
Yes, we're always at capacity.
And are you, are there any provisions planned for teenagers who are homeless? You know, there are a lot of high school cancer, what kind of stuff?
Yeah, that's a great question. We used to oversee a program called the Mary Bee Project, which then has, we've since spun off to be overseen by the BAF, the Youth Center in BAF. So Donna Bearhoven is a, is a social worker who works in all the different school departments and helps kids in a variety of ways. The Youth Center, excuse me, the Teen Center in BAF has opened, is opening a new, some new youth housing. They actually have a little bit, they're expanding it. And also in Brunswick is based an organization called Housing Resources for Youth and it's a home stay program where you say, okay, I'm 16, I need a place to be, I don't want to have to keep moving around. And then they vet these homes, these host families and match you up so you have a safe place to stay. So those programs are doing a phenomenal job of placing students in appropriate, appropriately supervised settings with adults that can have them not be in some kind of congregate setting. But Tedford's shelter does not serve unaccompanied minors, just kids who have a parent.
Are there any questions from the public?
You say you're at capacity and I understand from that, from all the ones you've turned away.
Yeah.
What's the process when somebody comes and asks for help but there's no capacity available? Do they go on a waiting list or are they just turned away? How does, how does that whole process work? In other words, you know, if one town gives you a big bunch of money, do they get favored versus the town that maybe doesn't get, have that capacity? What's going on in those?
That's a great question. Thank you for the question. First of all, if we can't support, if we can't provide housing for somebody, we can hopefully offer them outreach case management where we say, well, let's talk about the obstacles that you are facing that are making it difficult for you to find a place to be. And can we help you figure out maybe whether there are relatives and friends and things in your network to kind of give you a second chance that's better than whatever you're currently going to be living in. So that case management piece of helping people understand what they're dealing with and what are the specific barriers that you can knock down to resolve it, we want to offer that service. Staffing can really limit our ability to do that. We are down a couple of people, which, you know, fundamental issues and our jobs aren't always being done. But that outreach case management is important because that's one ability, one way you can respond even if you don't have a bed that night. Now, there's a waitlist at our family shelter, it's kind of straightforward, and you, you know, you're number three on the list and you can call, where am I now? Am I number two yet, right? The adult shelter is available on first come, first served basis, so we ask people to call back over and over. There are, there is some state policy about scoring. So when you do an intake with a, with a new person who's making a phone call, you ask them certain things like, how long have you been unhoused? And are you fleeing domestic violence? And are you a veteran? And certain criteria can sort of heighten somebody's score for prioritization in like a big shelter system. But that, so, but that scoring system is of limited value when you actually, when you're not moving people through very much. And your average length of stay is multiple months because people don't have a place to rent, even if they've got their voucher and they've figured it all out, you know? So the short answer to your question is waitlist on the family side, first come, first served on the adult side. Is, I think there might be times when that scoring comes into play and you can say, wow, we know that this individual is in the worst spot. So if they call tomorrow and, you know, we're going to, by noon, maybe we get three phone calls, maybe they're going to get the bed. But operationally, I'm not totally clear, as you can tell, I'm at, finding a point. There is no consideration for geography, none, zero. And interestingly, like, we'll serve people and we have, we do serve people in the shelters who, whose last stable house was, you know, not in Cumberland, Sagitt, Hockland County, or sometimes not even Maine. So people will find their way to us and a large number of people, you get phone calls, people are being discharged from a hospital, a crisis stabilization unit, they're being, they're being discharged from jail, they don't have a next place to go. So you get a lot of calls from people where their last stable residence is almost a meaningless question. So a big piece of that pie chart of where do people come from is like, we don't show, it isn't really clear where they're coming from. Does that make sense?
Do you?
To start with the budget process, what would the board be following?
Off the top of my head, having had time to discuss it, either the usual process for budgeting or consideration of ARPA funds if there are any left.
Yeah, either way requires a town meeting though.
I was referring to the petition process, which required all agencies asking for funding for the town.
Right, this is a little bit different because Tedford is, Tedford is specifically requesting it from ARPA. That's how they approach.
And that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah. So it's a little bit different than our normal annual request.
So I have a question. So Dragic recently reallocated some housing units. I'm curious as to why our local homeless folks were not given access to that as well. What are your thoughts on that?
I don't know all the uses of that project, but what that project was, was a developer came in, figured out how they could make that thing get built faster by getting more financing. And the way they could get more financing was by accessing federal dollars that are earmarked for housing asylum seekers. And so by bringing in federal, a totally different chain of money, they could accelerate opening up that, they could accelerate construction and completion of those units and putting people into them. And after two years of housing that population, those, those units all revert to whoever is either to market rate, some of them might be outside for affordable, but they're just going to be on the market. So I think that was just somebody being opportunistic and like seeing an unmet need, fine. And yeah, it's scary when, you know, different populations get pitted against one another. But I think that that framing doesn't quite capture how that came together. Does that make sense?
Kind of. Because, because you talk about supplying housing here, I'm sure you're aware that there's some BIW employees that are sleeping in their car and they come here from another location.
Yeah.
So, and, and they're exceptionally upset about how those housing units went down when they're not, one of our largest employers in the state is not being granted opportunity to house their employees.
Yeah.
And we bring them in from out of state and, and so now they have it home.
Well, I would love to be really clear, Tedford has nothing to do with that project.
No, 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 no. So how, so does BIW have access? I mean, are you working with any BIW folks that, that were living in tents over the summer that now probably can't be living in a tent?
There was, there was a couple in our house, in our, excuse me, there was a couple outside my office, talking to my colleague yesterday on some homelessness prevention work and the man was wearing his BIW hoodie at the table while I was, you know, walked right by him. So of course we're seeing BIW folks. We don't have any special rights with any town, any employer. But we of course are asking all larger employers to be creative about how they can do what the mills used to do, which was to actually take responsibility for some of that housing, right? Now, you don't want to be locked into the company store and all this stuff that used to happen 200 years ago, but I think the fact is, this, we are very lucky, it's not a coincidence that Tedford showed up in this part of Maine. There's this amazing hospital, there's this wealthy college, all these resources are here and all these wealthy individuals are scattered among us. And there is enough to go around if we are willing to work on solutions together.
I just want to say thank you to you because I was a caseworker in Portland for 34 years and you took some of my clients that no one else would take. And because of that, today you're still here to say you're alive. Some of these people were being raped on a daily basis and were living in a tent and one of them had their toes amputated and Portland didn't have capacity and even though they were coming from Portland, you were willing to take them and I just wanted to say thank you for that work.
I'll pass that on to our staff who are doing the hard work.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Mike?
The buildings here vacated. I'm assuming that they will stay as, as housing in some form or another. So the net housing gain is in fact, Brent, the full count of the new units.
That's a great question. So truly, as I suggested, should I say this? I'm sorry, I've talked a lot about this lately. Our family shelter was built in 1833. It's not in amazing condition. Our adult shelter was built in 1900. It has six, actually for, for a long time, it had 20 adults living in it. This is a single-family home with renovations with 20 adults living in it. The, the family shelter is owned by the Brunswick Housing Authority. They will figure out what happens next to it. I think there is an interest from a local medical organization in turning it into something, in a related use such as folks with certain conditions and health challenges being discharged from the hospital and how we, you know, help them with that step-down process. So we're kind of in that conversation, but we won't be the operator. That, it will no longer be Tedford's family shelter, right? We're saying it's basically unsuitable to be our family shelter, we need to do a different approach. Our adult shelter, that property is owned by Tedford and our board has not yet totally decided what to do with it. I think whatever happens next on the corner of Cumberland Street and Pushing Street is going to be a tear down and a rebuild. I would like to see it used in a related way, in some, in some way, you know, we, Tedford has apartment complex, little tiny apartment buildings across the region of 37 units of permanent supportive housing, which is apartments for folks who've previously been homeless. And they have some ongoing obstacles to stay housed, so they have case management. Wouldn't it be cool, so there's one of those right next to our library, right, there on Everett Street in downtown. And there's two in BAF and there's one in, there's one in Booth and one in Auburn. It would be lovely to have something similar to that in our little spot, but like, am I ready to chew on that, like, construction project and fundraising? No. But you're, but I appreciate you making the point, which is like, let's not give up scarce housing that is being, that has been set aside and has been held for people who don't have a lot of options and are in tough circumstances. Yeah, we're thinking about that carefully.
Do you work with BIW at all to develop housing? I'm thinking about, excuse me, the example of Saddleback Building. I think it was 60 units for employees because they couldn't, they didn't have housing for employees. And after their employees, if they have space available, they let the town people suggest, people will work for them. BIW ought to be able to build a building with housing in it, in that same kind of idea.
I think there, the kind of housing that BIW's workers need doesn't look much like this shelter that we're building right now. We're not housing developers experts, right? So there are lots of really smart people who do this, this kind of thing. I mean, there's so much of it going up on Brunswick planning right now with a bunch of different developers. Everybody's got their own scheme. BIW should be partnering with those guys, but I have nothing else to say about it, yeah.
Work for housing is a significant issue in the state of Maine.
Actually, BIW, there was something in the paper, they are working on some housing. But their workers, there was an article.
Senator Collins.
I'll see if I can find that.
I think there's 85 units being.
With the Navy, they.
With the Navy.
Granted, also from funding that, for specifically for BIW.
Great.
That's good. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your consideration. I know this is a big lift and we really appreciate your consideration. I think this is the most important piece of health, public health infrastructure to serve this region since they expanded Midcoast Hospital. So it'll be exciting to do it together.
How many counties, I mean, towns are you looking for this collaborative approach from?
So far, like, eight? I mean, we're just going to keep going and just.
But in the, I mean, you see, we're between, you know, Portland and Rockland, so in the middle.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, right. So like, am I, am I asking, you know, Dresden? You know, we, this is a political and a relational process. We can't just show up cold. So I don't know how far, how, it depends on how much success we have, that's my real answer. How's that? If we can get wins in the epicenter and then wins in the first ring, we're going to go to the second ring and try to get some wins. But the further you go from where we are, like, the part, you know, the more people that are saying, Pepper, what? You know, so it's, it's a tougher sell as you get further from the epicenter because frankly, if I lived in, in Dresden, I wouldn't want to accept the shelter bed and drive 70 minutes to my shelter bed so I could work the next morning back home. You know, we don't, we don't pretend that we have an equal footprint everywhere, but I do believe that over time, part of our growth is not just to get, have a bigger shelter building, but to have a bigger outreach staff that is more present in more of these far, far-flung for us communities so we can make the case for fundraising and whether or not we can build a town there. And say, look, you know, we're in your food pantry four days a week, helping your families out, so we're a stakeholder in your town. Right now, Tedford has been small in a certain way for a long time and we have, we do have more impact locally than we do further afield.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Not standing for recess?
Yeah.
I have two kids and the babies that are quick. I'm sorry to say.
Why is that?
Is that your coat?
No.
Okay.
We, we won't give away your coat tonight. You'll, you'll leave it, would you be? Okay, that is item number one. And we have lots of material in our packets. Item number two, the peer review recommendation for West Bath Parking. Christine, can you give us some background on that?
Yeah, Carly's probably got involved in this.
Would you?
Yeah, so as you know, I take the minutes for the planning board and they've been reviewing the West Bath Parking project. And in reviewing the application, they decided that they didn't have enough information and they wanted a peer review specifically for the traffic study that was done on the project. I reached out to our attorney, Gerald Parkinson, who recommended Sebago Technics and Goro Palmer, both of which submitted proposals that the planning board reviewed at their last meeting. Ted Croker was there along with Diane Morabito, who did the traffic study for West Bath Parking. and they were there to answer some questions. And after reviewing it, they are recommending that the board approve a contract with Sebago Technics. The applicant has agreed to pay for the peer review in accordance with the land use ordinance, so it wouldn't be of a cost to the town, but because the town is entering into the contract, the select would have to approve it.
So I was at that meeting as well when they did the peer review and the only question I, well, thought I had, I wouldn't call it a question, is the company that was selected has a significant delay in completing the work. And I think the longer we put this out, is that a detriment to the applicant? And the other one said they can do it essentially the following week. So I don't know if that affects your thought process or not, on how it's directed. When both of these companies are recommended by the attorney, so it's not.
There was also some concern with the pricing. Sebago Technics, in their proposal, included a site visit, whereas Gorel Palmer, that was kind of an à la carte add-on option. So that was part of the reason they went with Sebago Technics. They did look at the fact that Gorel Palmer could start within a week of approval and they definitely considered that. That was why they were recommending Sebago Technics.
And that was acceptable to the applicant? The recommendation of the planning board was not acceptable to you?
Well, may I speak?
Yes.
Well, they're both Ford GMCs, they're both very good companies. Diane, the girl that did the data for me, she's a PE and she's, well, her company's been working for 30 years, probably the best in the state. Well, Sebago Tech hired her trainee, who has five years under her, Gorel Palmer has a PE, 35 years in business that's done nothing but traffic studies. And so he's, we believe they're a better firm. So they can do it for $3,500 and the other one's 75. The only difference is the site visit. Well, let me tell you, my opinion is the site visit is gonna do nothing because, nothing for either one of them, because they're there to review our data. And the site visit, they could do it today on, on, on a computer, look at the site and that's really what you're doing. But they're there to review the data and it all boils down to this. If, if you have the right data, there's enough traffic going, you can put a light in there, you know, like you did out here at Voice Point, but you gotta have the right amount of traffic flow to do that. Otherwise the state won't allow you to put a light in just because you think you want to put a light in. And what happened was, to be honest with you, I went to Crokers and they spent a year, year and a half and they said, you know, the cost of this job is going up 30%. I said, wow, how do, how do we make this cost effective so that we can put parking in? So we went from 800 and some odd sites down to 475. And the 475 means you don't have to put a turning lane in. It all has to do with traffic flow in the counts. It all has to do with data and that's what they want, somebody to check the data. And a site visit does not, doesn't have anything to do with the data. And so, so, to be honest with you, when she told me that, I called her up and I said, "Well, I'd like to cut some of the costs and one would be a turning lane." And to be honest, I'd be right up front with you and, cause that's a couple 300, you know, a little money, good money. And the, and the costs have gone up and the, and the counts, you know, isn't there? So I said, "How many does it take to get it down to, so you don't have to put it in?" She got back to me and says, "Well, 500 is a, is a checking point of whether you put in a turning lane or not." I said, "Make it 475." I said, "I don't want anybody being questioned about that." So the, the, the planning board is really upset that they, they, they think that we're trying to pull some wool, I think, and we're not. We're just trying to make it affordable and we're just trying to, you know, get the project somewhere near completion and they have told us these companies are checking data. A site visit does nothing to do with what they're asking for. So really, I looked at it like Gorel Palmer is $3,500 to do about a day's worth of double checking, that's pretty expensive, but if you got an engineer at $350 an hour, he puts 10 hours, 10 hours in, that's 3,500. That's what it's gonna take to check the data. And the other guy has got a $3,500 check and a $4,000 site visit. A site visit does nothing for the checking of the data.
I noticed on the site visit, they weren't checking what happens on, what happens at the various mill intersection as a result of increased traffic.
Well, that's all in the data. They've covered all, see, that's what we did, we resourced that and covered it and we're questioning engineers. I mean, I don't see any engineers on the planning board, so they just left, they had a couple, but they left. But they're checking data that has been calculated and it takes an effect that road you just put in.
And that is all in the data? The various mill and all of that, the traffic?
They don't need to do anything but check the data because that's what you have to do, otherwise you'd have to go out there for, you know, a period of five, six weeks and do the counts and all this stuff.
So neither.
And they calculate, calculate how many cars are parked there. The, the biggest thing that throws off me is, is from the very beginning, everybody thinks because it's 800 spaces, you're gonna have, 800 cars come out all at once, well, they don't. They come down on a bus and they meter out. And the reason BIW wanted more spaces was for second shift. So you're really, like, say if it's 475, you're gonna get about the same amount of traffic flow we got now come in and you're gonna have spaces left there for the second shift to come in. So it's, the traffic that's on that road is actually being ducked tail and it's, it's spread out because you've got first shift, second shift. That's, that's what I don't think everybody's taken into consideration.
So when they, when the first shift gets dropped off, I'll say on Bus A, does Bus A go back and pick up or does Bus A take second shift?
No, with that, with that amount of parking, they'll come in, this shift will come in, the bus will come in full, the bus will leave full. But you need twice the parking. Everybody's like, oh, there's 400 and some odd cars, it's not gonna be.
So they shuttle back at the same time?
If we do 475, it's gonna be just what like it is today. It's gonna be half in, half out.
My question is to the board, I guess, if, we're asking for a study. How do we get to tell them what company they have to use? We have to, the planning board needs our people.
The planning board gets to choose because it's, the planning board is the one requesting the study. It's at the cost to the applicant.
Right, so I don't understand why they don't get to choose who they use.
I don't understand because I really think that Gorel Palmer is very much more qualified than the other.
I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking from my own perspective, if you're asking me to do something, I'm agreeing to do it, what right do you have to tell me who to use? It's a question of, as I understand it, it's a question of, who is going to give you the most reliable and the most information?
If, if you watch the meeting of the planning board, Mr., the other two, Mr. Williams and the chair, for 10, 15 minutes, it felt like to me, was saying to Mr. Mitchell, that if you want to do a, do a site visit, you just tell them and it's so much an hour, they get hourly rates. And that's the only big difference between the two of them. And it takes five hours, it's $200 an hour, it's a thousand bucks, but, but it's a $3,500 data check, a site visit has nothing to do with it.
Well, I think that, I think, and I've participated in many of the planning board meetings, I think that delaying the subject based upon availability of the first company for six weeks is a significant delay to the applicant that I think needs to be brought to the attention.
I really think the applicant, the second bidder, is still full of work of what he is right now. They really don't wanna be dealing with such a little thing. And $3,500 is a long line to check data, what's gonna take one day for an engineer and why you gotta take six weeks? It's a little bit hard for me because it's been a year and a half almost and my cost is going up 30%. So time is money, but I just would think the town would warrant the, working with the applicant rather than against them.
So no matter which company we go with, we're asking for the same data other than the site visit.
But they're gonna analyze the same exact data.
Exact same data.
And those are gonna be the recommendation.
One's doing a $3,500 at Dallas and one's doing that plus a $4,000 site visit.
My understanding. You can still ask for a site visit from either one.
Correct.
Just to be clear, like, we don't have to forego the site visit if you decide, well, there's a list of pricing, the second company.
It's funny because, like I say, two in the planning board out of the three were trying to convince that they really liked, Williams said he actually liked Gorel Palmer better.
It was my impression that the chair didn't have a preference. Williams was encouraging Gorel Palmer and then Mitchell made the motion for Sebago based on the site visit. So I wouldn't say it was too romantic.
I understand what I saw.
I would also, I don't have a dog in fight, I'm not trying to sway one way or the other, but I will say, as a board that has had two people resign, if, they were very concerned that the board, that the select board would choose a contrary company from what they wanted. And I said, "Well, it is their choice. Suzanne will be at the meeting and she was here, so she can kind of explain." Which it seems like Suzanne's not supporting them at all, which is totally your prerogative. I'm just raising concern that with the minimum of three members on the board.
But I also look at, at an applicant in the town and we're supposed to be a friend, a business friendly entity as a board and trying to grow our business population, I think that we've, for whatever reason, there's been delays in the project. And I think waiting another six weeks for, for analysis of data, when another company could, another equally reputable company based upon our attorney stated that they're both good candidates, I think if all it is is data analytics and, and a timeframe that I think would be beneficial to the applicant who's waited 18 months, I'm all for trying to expedite the project.
Is this work that can be done now or would you need to wait because of the weather anyways?
No, the weather's not, this data was not a year or so ago and they're analyzing that data.
Right, I understand. Can you put the spaces in now if you?
Can you start construction?
Oh, no, no, I, I wouldn't do that. I would, I'd like to make sure this job gets accepted by the town.
Right, but what I, I think what people are asking is, if the planning board accepts the plan, how soon? How can, how soon can you start?
You know, Crokers is gonna do the work, of course, I'm not going anywhere else.
Right.
And you know, I'm kind of out of that situation pretty big now, but, but they have a lot of work. I would say it's gonna have to be, whenever they can start, I'd like to say this summer. I'd like to say this summer, but I can't say that without knowing what they have in backlog and everything else. But I would say they would probably start parts of it this summer, yes.
So really, the time delay is not an issue, it's a cost.
No, it is, it is an issue. Everything is, everything is, six weeks is six, I've been here for, no, it is an issue. I do believe it is. Because there's nothing to say that they're not gonna come up with something else after this. I'd like to get this one early out of the way, but I, I just don't understand why, why you would, why we'd have to wait when, when Gorel Palmer, who's probably the best in the business, other than the one I've hired.
But what I'm hearing you say, you could wait, you don't want to wait.
No, 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 I, the crockery will start as soon as we get approval. I mean.
That's not what you just said.
No, it's, they'll start putting it into, into their backlog. In other words, they'll stop, they'll stop bidding work that would take the place of this work. And so if they bid something that comes up, I can't care, I don't know, they bid something next week or two months from now and then that took my, my slot. And so every week that goes by and they bid something that comes up, it's pushing me back further into the slot.
We've already got a 30% of costs as well.
Yeah, we need to make a commitment so they know that we're in the queue.
Yeah, it's, it's all, you know, it's all business. So every time is money, no matter how you look at it.
Tell me what is.
90 hours prior here?
Are you, are you watching a movie?
No, I'm trying to turn the damn thing off.
What is involved in a site visit specifically?
You drive down, you look at the site and you leave.
Do you count spaces? I mean, how detailed?
You know, on Google Earth, today they don't need a site visit, first of all, there's no need of it. I think they just would, on Google Earth, you can see more than you can drive down, finding new stalls and doing that, but they don't need them. We have already counted every stall, every car, it's dat, you do not need a site visit.
And who gave, who provided the original data?
It's with, my, my, the issues that I hired.
Somebody that you had hired?
Yes.
And does Ming Department of Transportation have anything to do with this or?
Yes, yes. I would, I would say this, we'll say, we'll say, for example, if, if, if the select planning board says, "Okay, we're gonna prove this, but you gotta put the turning lane in." If there's not over 500 counts there, which there is not, because from the data it doesn't show it, because we put it down, you know, it's gonna be up and over that, puts a turning lane in, the state has to verify everything here, you can't, they're gonna okay it. It's like putting a light out here. They, they wouldn't put a light out here unless you have the counts. They have to maintain that. They have to maintain and plow that road, they have to do all this stuff. It's, it's really not, it's not all of a sudden done, but they take the engineer, just like the two people in front of us the other night when we were there, they were doing stuff in their house and everything, they had engineers there and said, "Yeah, I got this volume and that volume, it was so many feet." You listen to the engineers, they go, and the planning board says, "Okay, you checked that box, you checked the box, you're okay." Now we've done that, but they don't check the box because they don't believe us, they think our engineers should be putting a turning lane. Well, it's under 500, it's down to 475, there's no turning lane. And that's a cost savings to get the project up and running, but there's no need of it because I don't see any traffic problem there crossing right now. I mean, we've been told there's a lot of big, huge traffic problem every time I let out, I'll come down, look at an intersection, I live here and they're not backed up anymore, seven or eight cars at that light when they, when BIW lets out. I mean, that's all I see at any one time now. And there's that many cars on the other side, you come both ways, so I don't know.
Well, and there's something that we could even, I mean, time the light differently. If there is a backup, we could extend the, there's things that in theory could perhaps expedite departure if necessary by timing the light from 3:15 to 4 o'clock.
If we need to, but I don't, I don't see.
No, just, I mean, there's other things if, that we had at our opportunity.
But there is other considerations. He's talking about 475 cars there, he's not talking about all the BIW people at the old Ames and the BIW people at Houghton's and the BIW people at New Meadows Road and, and when they all get out, it does cost. It's not your 475 cars, now it's a thousand and something cars.
Well, we started with, you know, 900, we're down to 800, we're down to 475.
I, I know, but I'm seeing where people are thinking and coming, you know, you just keep talking about your 475, there's three other yards associated that's in there.
Yeah, I, I don't go to Brunswick at 3:30 because, you know, it used to be the 30 minute mile.
I know, but try to get to a dog disappointment when you have one at 3:30.
Yeah, no, I can't.
Those go on 196 trying to go towards something.
Right. So it is, it does tie traffic up for a little while at that time. So I'm not being at the planning board meeting, I'm just wondering what they were thinking. It's hard to make these decisions when you don't have the other.
They were looking, the perspective.
They were looking at the aggregate, not just the 400. Are we ready for any kind of a motion? I mean, I, I move that we go with Gorel Palmer and require a site visit and then allow a six week earlier timeframe start to expedite the project.
Can we allow the six week expedite? I'm concerned that if we add in the timing, that, that muddies the waters.
So I, I, can we make the motion to accept the proposal? Just to be clear, not to go with Gorel Palmer, but to accept Gorel Palmer's proposal. Well, with, I, I move that we accept Gorel Palmer's proposal with the addition of a site visit to accommodate the evaluation of the property in person.
But that's not in the proposal, so I wonder.
Well, it is, you can, it's an add. It's à la carte, there's à la carte services. So if we're gonna accept the proposal.
Yeah, but it's not in here.
Well.
It's, it's in their contract.
It is, it's the additional.
You'd have to ask for something that they don't really need, but they'll do it.
Will we pay it for it?
The town doesn't pay anything for it.
The applicant pays for?
Per hour, I pay it per hour. But they drive from Portland, they come down, look at it, drive back, it's five hours times two, three and a half hours.
Plus mileage.
I can second that.
I agree with you.
So we have a motion to accept the, Gorel Palmer.
Gorel Palmer?
With a stipulation that a site visit be added? And that's been seconded? All in favor?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
It sometimes takes us a while to get there. Well, and all they're doing is evaluating data.
I'm very pleased.
I think it's.
Yeah, you're a saint.
What's a saint?
You're a saint.
No, you're not. Just for verification, there's a train ten out there.
Same time with those nine years.
I give it all to my parents, what I got.
All right. So Mr. Crocker, you may, you may depart if you wish, or you can sit with your blowing halo.
No, I, I want to thank you very much. I think that's the right thing to do.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Item number three, committee volunteer recruitment. Suzanne, you have a proposal, would you like to discuss that?
Absolutely. First, I'd like to address Mr. Hennessy, actually.
That is not on the agenda.
Well, he's tied, he's actually tied to this. I want to thank, I actually want to thank David for all the amount of time he's volunteered. And I feel that we've relied on him as the go-to man, and I think it's an unfair burden that we've placed on him as he's on five boards. While I believe the policy is different, I don't want to have you think that I did not trust your dedication to this community, David, because I actually do. And on that note, for the volunteer recruitment strategy, I'm, I, I think our, you know, I, there's a couple of things. I think our town could publish the committees with some sort of area. We have people who commit every day to the front desk to register their cars or whatnot, share the information at the front desk on what committees are, what the timeframe is. I think I would like to see, you know, in theory, a, a job fair, committee fair at the firehouse that allows our community to come and speak to each of the committees and see what the dedication timeline and how they can get involved. I think there's a ton of people in West Bath that have not been invited to participate. And I think if we make the effort, you'll see a whole new group of people happy to volunteer on behalf of West Bath.
Specifics. On the recruitment, are you proposing that brochures, et cetera? What kind of information would you like at the front desk?
Right above what each committee is, it doesn't have to be a brochure, just a typed topic on each committee, the time, the meetings that they have, timeframe necessary to dedicate properly to the, the opportunity, and what their goals are as a committee. And that same information would be used, I'll say, at the committee fair, at the firehouse, if each of the committees have the opportunity to engage with the people of our staff, explaining in person how to become engaged.
Who is going to develop the written material for the, for the front desk is what I want to know.
Well, I'm more than happy to take it on, but I think our town staff has all of that information already written. But if you want me to do that, I'd be happy to do it.
And in terms of your job fair, who is organizing that?
Again, I think we have town staff that can, we organize all kinds of stuff on behalf of the town. But if, if no one is willing to do that, I'll do it.
Why didn't we need a job fair? Why couldn't we, Suzanne, if we had those descriptions, take them to like town meeting, um, a meeting like tonight?
I think in person is a, a very effective way to share a mission on each committee. You know, it's, we, we do so much from our phones and Zoom and, and that personal connection, I think, is the most successful way, especially when we're trying to garner membership. If you can meet with the people that are on the town meeting and the committees, I think it, it, that approach is gonna be the most effective way for us to encourage additional volunteers.
Have you talked with committee chairs, et cetera, to see whether or not people are actually willing to give hours of volunteer time, go in extra hours?
No, I've, I've done none of that because I was told that we needed to discuss it at a meeting first.
I mean, I, I think it'd be a good idea to poll members of the, the chairs of the committees as a starting point to see how much participation you could get from them. And then work from there on getting other information to pass out to people. But the best information, to me, would come from the, um, the different committees' chairs.
And we, we already have significant information on each of the committees in the handbook anyway, or the policy manual. We already have the lion's share of that. I don't think we should wait. I mean, I, I think it'd be very easy for us to pull that information from the policy manual and share what that is and share openings and have that posted tomorrow or Monday. I'm ever assuming that they can, you know, create that information, because people are registering cars every day, registering their dogs every day. If you want to get involved in recycling, if you want to get involved, there's so many things that we have in the community that may have a, a, you know, an alignment with other people, that they're unaware of what the opportunities are.
Carly, what kinds of recruitments are already being done through the front desk? Or are there?
There are. When I meet with people that either express interest or I know that they have some sort of familiarity with a, a certain committee, I'll let them know that it's available and, you know, just talk to them if they have any neighbors or friends that they think would be a good fit. Because of course, some of our committees have multiple openings, so that's a good chance to kind of recruit people in pairs. We did put an ad in the newspaper last Friday, and again, for this Friday, letting them know that Planning Board, Board of Appeal specifically, as well as other committees have openings. I haven't heard anything back on that yet. It's kind of some soft outreach, I would say. We have in the past put it on the website. I should put it on again, for sure. I just think that there's, um, you know, it's, I get so many emails, and I think people also get emails, that I don't, and sometimes I overlook some of them. Certainly not from West Bath, but from other things. And I, I think it's, you know, having it posted in a visible location as people come in, you may or may not know them personally, but they may see something that, you know, strings a chord with them that I think is a great way for us to garner additional opportunities.
I, I think the idea of a workshop, actually, is a very powerful one. And the greatest analogy I would make is all of us in this room, within the professional organizations that we serve, we decide if we want to volunteer for committee work based on the dinners we attend within our professional organizations, our social groupings that we attend. We know the people that are on the committees, that they are seeking additional volunteers. We know if we're compatible, we know if we communicate effectively. And we don't have, even post office here in town, folks don't have the opportunity to meet. When we're at town meeting, we don't stop and have a lunch break like we used to when we did it on Saturdays and that. We don't get to know people. And time is precious for everyone. Meeting the people with whom I would be interacting if I didn't know them, to me, would be an essential portion of, do I want to take time away from dinner with my family? Do I want to take time away from a professional organization that I'm already serving? I, I think it would help to say we are an open community. I think what's being done at the front desk is great, if you know your friends, if you know, I think that's wonderful. But I think opening it up to folks that aren't as well-known in letting the committee members and then meet one another. And if a chair isn't available, we have all chaired committees in this town. You don't want to have a lack of people on your board or your committee, because you spend more time as the chair. So certainly, if I was still chairing something, I would welcome a couple of hours, an hour and a half, whatever, at the fire station, because it would be time for that to me anyway. And if I couldn't make that day as the chair, I'm sure I could designate somebody else on my board of committee who would be equally happy to it. So thank you for letting me speak, but I think it's a very healthy adjunct to what's being done.
Do you have a recommendation?
I just have a thought, because I'm listening to this discussion. I know people that have moved into town and have asked me about participating in town government. And I say, go to the town office and tell them you're interested in looking at opportunities. And I wonder if it wouldn't be just the first thing to do is a simple sign on the wall in big letters that says, we have committee, we have, the town needs people to volunteer for committees and list them. And that, somebody that walks into the front office and sees that might speak to Carly when Carly had no idea they had an interest or might have an interest. Just, that'd be the place I'd start. None of the other stuff am I saying is wrong, but.
You gotta start somewhere.
And, and it might catch somebody's attention that, on something, just because you, I don't know who's, I mean, I'm on two different committees. And, uh, both of them are full. They don't need any more members. But obviously, the planning board needs help. They've lost members for whatever reason. And, and I know that there might be people interested in doing that. But they don't, may not know what I just learned tonight, that the planning board needs people. Put up a sign and, and you can change it. I don't, I don't know how to design it, but big letters, so it catches people's attention, on a poster type thing in the office. I go in there and if Carly and Jules are busy with something, I stand there patiently in back. I look around at pamphlets that are on, on things, but that would catch people's attention, that might have an interest. That might just be a place to start.
I think listing the committees and the, and the description of them right up on that bulletin board, right in the back of the wall, is a great place to, and then say, you know, volunteers welcome, and let them ask about it.
Yeah, I don't need it, I don't think you need a big, long description, just name the committee. Now, some of the people are gonna say, well, what's that committee do? And they, they have staff numbers that can be very easily answered those questions. But I just think listing the needs.
Carly, could we put that on the board at the fire station too?
There's not really a board at the fire station.
The outside, just a sign.
Oh, well, the sign, yeah, of course.
Yeah, that one, there's about a hundred other things to put on there.
We're just saying, the town's looking for volunteers. Check the website for opportunities. I mean, anything, so it sends them.
Yeah, I just think, yeah, we need to start slow and not kind of get all the committees to buy in. And I think if we go slow, I, I like all of these ideas, but I don't think we're ready for a job fair. I think as we slowly get it out there, at some point, we may be.
Well, and I, I agree with that. I just, something, we're doing, we, we need to do more, you know, and I think if we, um, and they're making people that are on the committees that feel obligated to stay, because there's not a replacement. And I think that's also an unfair burden to put on the current membership. You know, they, they want to support the town and, and there's no replacement, so here, I'll do it again for my three-year term or whatever. And I think that we need to let them know that we want them to stay, but don't feel obligated.
And I do think a brief description, because what does a planning board do? You know, I want to be on the planning board, but what I may think it is may be totally different from what it is.
Well, that's what the description is, is important.
That's what I'm saying, that's why it's a board. Because planning board may be, what, planning for the town?
Until they realize they're gonna rewrite two hundred ordinances. Which is how you do that.
So, do we want to go back to what baby steps were taken and who's gonna take that?
That's the question. A wanted poster, perhaps.
That's a poster.
But it would cause it would catch attention.
I mean, so I feel comfortable taking on a sign. I already have committee descriptions and I, I've signed. So I think I'm, I'm good with taking that on.
I also did see it in the paper and I thought that was wonderful. So thank you for doing that.
And Carly, I happen to be involved in publishing and have it. Well, if you want to take on that, you're saying, if you have, I'm happy to, it wouldn't hurt my feelings. I have, I, I won't be the one doing it. I've got graphic artists. But I can find someone from my company to do it if you want it done. So do you want to do it? Yeah, if you, if you can send me the descriptions, all of that, I'm confident I can get something done.
Can, um, can you also put something on the school Facebook page or ask to have something like that done?
Pass it on to the school.
Because there's some fairly active people involved in the school who are not necessarily involved in the municipal system.
And as their children are aging out of the school system, they might be looking for other ways to volunteer their time.
And how do we get this out? Is, do, do we have any space? Or would senior spectrum put this in their newspaper or?
We look at all these great ideas. Seriously, just by chatting about it.
Is there a window on the window at the store?
We have a bulletin board. You won't want to put anything down there. And I am amazed at the people that read it.
When they're making your pizza, you gotta write.
It's a link or a.
Whatever you do, try to keep score of what seems to work.
So maybe what we want to do when somebody applies for something, ask them where they saw it.
Magazine was supposed to press on Tuesday. You have my full attention.
Are we concluded on this one?
Sure.
Okay. Policy on Town Committee Pursuiters Proposed Amendments. That's all the way over to item four. And the essential change there is that.
Page three.
We have, um, encoded is the, uh, that is on red, yeah. That committee members will be appointed to serve staggered three-year terms, except for the planning board members who will serve for five as set forth in the land use ordinance. So that's the only change. We discussed that. So could I have a motion?
You said will, and I just want to point out it says shall.
Shall, oh, shall be a point.
I move that we accept the amendment as presented.
And second thing, all in favor?
Okay. The revaluation of the workshop with the town attorney, rules of procedure. We meet on Thursday, the twenty-fifth, at five thirty at the fire hall. The, um, it would seem to me that the, um, two things that the attorneys are most qualified to deal with are, first of all, the contract as it was presented, um, as well as the state statutes dealing with the, with rebuild. It seems to me that questions from the public should be submitted beforehand.
I think the one that we handed in before that never got answered.
Those, um.
Well, it depends upon what topic they're on.
The questions, the questions would be submitted to the attorney, depending on whether or not they pertain to the contract or whether or not it applied to the state statute. The, the attorney will have no capacity to speak about individual.
I understand that.
But, um, what was your question?
I mean, there's a whole bunch of them in the handout.
I think you said.
How they came about the basis of determining the different rates, what neighborhood five means, or title zone, deep, deep water.
That's not something that the attorney is going to be able to answer to.
But can the public have some answers?
Well, they won't come from the attorney on that specific topic.
But it may fall into elements of the contract that were, were not abided by. That's too specific for the town attorney. He doesn't look at that. A generic neighborhood analysis question would kind of fulfill that piece, generically speaking. You have a question?
Well, I was going to answer yours. It would seem to me that if we had them in by Monday, three P M., that would give them time enough in the office to do any research if they needed to.
Did you say three P M.? Did you say three P M.?
Three P M.
Did you say 3:00 PM?
3:00 PM.
And I think it's important to give Attorney Bauer some time to review.
Right.
And, you know, make sure that he's prepared for the workshop. It's only a few days.
Right.
So, I don't want questions coming in too late.
Right.
When he has plenty of other clients that he's dealing with.
Well, he may have other clients, but certainly no more than we, so, um, we're definitely number one, should be. So, would Tuesday, I mean, Monday at 3:00 be acceptable for, for you all, or...
Can you put that on a sign?
Put what on a sign?
The, the blinking sign, abatement questions should be submitted by 3:00 PM Monday.
I think that...
That's a good word for our sign now. Yeah, so there's a lot on there right now. Um, I can, yeah, I can see what I can do, though. Maybe want, anybody who's got a question, we want them to see it, if it's not done via email.
I think if people just see that we're looking for questions, they might not understand that, what kind of questions we're looking for.
Perhaps, um, on the list that you send out?
Have a special email.
And a, and a note up on the town website, just to...
So, just to get back to that question, will the attorney be reviewing the former list of questions, or should people submit questions fresh?
Any, they, I feel that they should submit fresh questions, and they should be related, as Madeline said, to something that the attorney would advise on, like the legality of the contract, um, state statute, it could be around revaluation, it could be around the abatement process, types of questions that the attorney...
They won't have a value description or something, like, they don't have, that's not their bucket.
Yeah, something that the attorney would review and offer an opinion on.
And, and the difficulty is, the attorney doesn't actually understand assessing, and he doesn't, I have no idea truly if he has any assessing background. And the questions that go to the core are, do you comprehend assessing?
That's not fair to ask you.
So, it's kind of a, if you want to get something out of it, then we need to find a way to get to the core of the question. As it was started in August, where is your market analysis?
And what's the timeframe that it was based upon as well? Because it was an 18-month timeframe that creates different variables depending upon where in that timeframe that analysis was calculated.
Inconceivable prior to the 18 months.
I think, yeah, it, it, it's how you ask an attorney to shape a question of, "Hey, fella, did you do your job?"
Well, the statute should share a significant component to that. I presume he can evaluate a statute. And if he doesn't have clarity, search that, and maybe send him the questions, and please be prepared to talk about neighborhood data that's missing. Because that could be one of the questions, how does the neighborhood data that we didn't receive fit in with our contract or evaluation? Or something like that.
I think it's more important to convey the problem than to ask him for a solution.
Well, did, did we get the neighborhood analysis fed by the contract?
Have we considered requesting Steve Sullivan as the Deputy Director for Main Revenue Services to attend? This absolutely forcefully involves Main Revenue Services, it is what they have thought.
I'm happy to call him.
With enough notice, I would anticipate that he might.
That conversation.
And then that might be something that the attorney would be comfortable to let Steve be the sole attendee, that he might want to converse with Steve, rather than with a grasshopper, just so I know.
Christine, um, would you reach out to Steve Sullivan at the Property Tax Division?
Yes, I can do that.
And see if he would be available?
Mm-hmm.
I have his cell phone if you want. I'm sure that Christine is capable of getting the appropriate telephone number.
Actually, Cindy, you do need to get it from someone else.
His cell phone's not called.
Correct. You have, I have some...
They have to, they have to go to the State Office.
I'll have you share with Christine on a collaborative notion.
So, do we have the rules of procedure?
You have a question?
Tell us, do you want?
The contract the town had with Parker really does not pinpoint specifically the items that we are all concerned about. The critical question, as it's been said, is the sales analysis, definition of all the terms, and explication of what the precise methodology was, if we ever get the sales analysis. And the town contract doesn't specifically mention any of that stuff. What we'd have to rely upon is, I think, Rule 208 of Main Revenue Services, which basically says in broad terms, the town should get everything they need in order to continue their assessment adjustments in the future. And so, all the possible coercive force that we might bring to bear on Parker is pretty much on the state's interpretation of that providing all stuff. And have any of you had discussions with Steve, with Stephen to see how much he's willing to back that kind of inquiry?
I asked him to put his opinion in writing, and he has not done so.
Okay. Because that's the, the key thing is, or, is that kind of question of how much the state will push. As I noted in a note to you folks, we can state that, hey, he really didn't fulfill a number of specific things that are in the contract, but really, they would be picky and, uh, but you could say, hey, you didn't visit every place three times and ask to go in, you didn't visit, ask you've done your analysis, and therefore, you haven't completed the contract. But if you just give us the sales analysis and the definitions and the methodology, we would let that go. But it would be a lot better if the state said, hey, you really should provide it.
I think it's also, excuse me, he is also, Mr. Sullivan has also not informed, um, either Parker Associates or our town administrator of the opinion that he rendered verbally that was reported last month.
He's not gonna comment on, on the contract specifics. What he will comment upon is what, um, the statute elements that were not provided, which calls for the documentation left behind. There's elements that are required by state statute.
Yeah, that's a critical...
And that's, the contract, the, the contract language or what we did or didn't get, they don't necessarily care about.
Yeah, I know, but if, if, if we ended up trying to coerce them, you could hit that contract part, but we all know that really isn't important. Important stuff is what we're asking for.
And the attorney can certainly determine what elements were not fulfilled in the contract language, from that perspective.
Do we have the guidelines? What about public participation? My, my feeling is that questions should be submitted and that the select board, um, be the only people with whom the attorney is consulting that day.
I think a workshop allows everyone to communicate. I don't know how you can...
We, we can set the rules as to how the workshop will be run. It's our workshop, so we have that possibility and responsibility. And, um, I'm not certain that Mr. Bauer wishes to entertain questions from the general public.
And we have a limited amount of time. And I hope that the result of this workshop is that the select board or the board of assessors will develop a plan for how we move forward. Because when questions come into the town office about our procedures and how we're gonna handle this moving forward, we do not have answers.
Well, that's a question we certainly need to pose to Mr. Sullivan, is how do we provide abatements if we don't have the data necessary to do that?
I asked him that question, he volunteered, no answer.
I've done quite a bit of research, pulling cards, looking at property maps and this and that, and it's mind-boggling how you can come up with a value for somebody that's got one-tenth of an acre, a waterfront, how, somebody that's got two-tenths of an acre, and so on and so forth, going and increasing it, how do they take and come up with a value that is fair? I mean, in looking at it and, and going through all the data, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just, it's mind-boggling, how do you do it? I mean, I've got several arguments, all prepared, that are, that are legitimate concerns, and I could put a valid argument up against it, comparing, why'd you do this to this one and not this to this one? How come you're treating this person different than that person?
Well, and that's where the comps really play a tremendous...
Well, around Maine, there, there's, that many comps.
That's the question.
If you wanna get out of York, Maine, you could find your comps in your kiddies, Kettibunkport, there's a heck of a lot of difference than up here in West Bath, Maine.
If the assessor doesn't tell you what he's doing, there's no way you can question him. You know, there's no way.
Yeah, yeah, he's gonna back right out, he don't have to answer it. It's pretty obvious he's, uh, what he's doing to the town.
You think that it's obvious, and I think it's obvious in an entirely different direction. Neither of us is a certified main assessor, and certified main assessors obviously also disagree. So, we do need an intervention, which is why I asked Mr. Sullivan for it, it has not been forthcoming. So, um, we have, um, we have not decided how to improve beyond submitted questions. I don't see how the public can ask a spontaneous question that also gives Mr. Bauer the opportunity to prepare for the question, is my concern.
I'm okay if a question's submitted and he has to respond later in writing. Um, if it's something that we did not receive, that in theory is a relevant question, I, I don't think we should not include it and let, and just say, you know, say, any questions that he's not prepared to answer tonight, he'll get back to, you know, to the board in writing and we'll share it. I don't, I think it's important that we allow questions. For those who don't see the sign or receive the email, we've excluded them from the process. On, on a question submitted, submitted.
Could you ask Mr. Bauer if that would be an acceptable procedure for him?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it should come in writing, or he should be allowed to get it in writing.
The question should be...
It might come up in the meeting, but they should resubmit it in writing. Otherwise, not many have good information and good questions.
And the question doesn't have to be answered that evening, but it could be a valid question.
Yeah, but if somebody's just sitting there and they say, say the question, he shouldn't be responsible for keeping track of that question and to come in writing. The other thing is, if the public is not going to be able to participate back and forth, it's gonna be your workshop. I think it's got to be absolutely clear when the meeting starts. Loud voice, everybody listen to this, this is very important. This is how this select board, board of assessors workshop is going to work tonight.
So, is this open to the public, or is it select me, people only, or...
Everything is open to the public. We are allowed to limit public participation at board meetings.
Okay, and what time is this?
5:30.
5:30 on the fire station?
A week from today, on the 25th. And the questions that you have, that you shared this evening, if you could present it in a more generic perspective, instead of talking about level five or this, you say, how can we determine the waterfront valuation? Not title, not, don't tie it to anything that he's not prepared or will have the knowledge to answer, but just a generic...
Yeah, I, I understand, if there's a specific question, he wouldn't be able to answer that.
I think it's a more realistic goal to convey the concerns of the questions than it is to push for a answer, because it's not going to happen. I mean, it shouldn't happen, because if, if it's going to go to the next step or not go to the next step, it needs time for him to get a fuller view of the entirety of questions.
So, you're suggesting that we're not looking for an automatic...
I suggest you try to not go for a solution. You try to get him up to speed with the concerns.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, important subject concern.
Okay.
Lawyers don't end strong, man.
Because this isn't a trial, we're not there yet.
On another note, has the town had many reports of damage from the storm?
I actually... Can we, can we hold that till public comment? Um, please, don't forget that for, under public comment, because I think that's important too. Um, so, public participation, where are we going with that?
I'm not, I think they should be able to submit a question and not, and not, you say, any questions that are submitted tonight, don't expect an answer this evening. Is that a way of saying, you can share a concern, but we need to have the opportunity to review our response before given?
And it should be submitted in writing.
And the person asks, asking questions to, submitted in writing, or should we depend on Carly taking notes and Ben presenting the question? How is that gonna work?
I think the person should submit their own question.
Right, I think so too, I wonder if you say it.
Although it's gonna create a delay. I mean, Carly's gonna be taking minutes regardless, I think, are you...
Be less of a delay if they had their written question and they could...
Yeah, great, if it happened like in the moment, it's, you know, it makes, comes to mind during the meeting.
You can make sure there's pens and paper.
Yeah, because I'm not gonna type the minutes up...
Right.
...directly after the meeting to get to Mark Bauer.
Why, did you have something?
I would like, if it's limited in no public participation, that it be limited, but to include if a representative from Main Revenue Service is on site for the workshop. Other revales in which I have actively participated, assessors, including me, 200 people, every question asked, I answered, the person doing the revale answered, and we have the Deputy Director for Main Revenue Service also present. Assessors answer publicly, not a problem. 200 people wanna ask me questions about the revale? That's why I am being compensated. And the deputy directors appear for Main Revenue Service routinely. I do not know what the break in communication between this town and, and Steve Sullivan is, not up to me. But if he sees the parameters for a workshop, that he is not permitted to speak. As a deputy director, but what bigger fool would he be than to, on the state's nickel, attend this workshop, simply to observe it? So, if you prohibit the public from speaking, that's gonna be your call, but I would not deem him to be a member of the public. I, I am requesting that.
If he, um, if he is able to be with us on the, on the 25th... If he, if he is able to be with us on the 25th, then he would undoubtedly be given permission to speak, carte blanche permission to speak.
If you designate someone from Main Revenue to attend, I would hope any Main Revenue Services employee would be permitted to speak.
If he, if he deputizes somebody, I don't see any reason why not.
Thank you for the thought.
Are you do you have do you have, are you clear about what, as clear as can be?
There were a lot of ideas bounced around, I think I got the general gist of it. I just need to know on the agenda if you're going to allow public comment at the end. During or the end, I'm not clear on that. Or not at all.
If we have it, it should be at the end?
I'm not sure that it's going to be helpful.
I think we need a vote on that, because I don't think the board members are in agreement. So I want it to be crystal clear of how it could be done.
I would prefer not, myself.
I prefer that we have it, so Kathy, you're the deciding vote on this.
Oh, gosh.
And it could be, we could, I think all public comment should be after the lion's share of discussions happen with the attorney, with whoever's representative on behalf of the Main Revenue Services, and all the, and that we've had the opportunity to ask our questions. We can designate a certain timeframe for Q and A from the public and stand in there that whatever question you ask, please submit it in writing following the question, so that we can make sure that we get you an answer.
Will you, Madeline, will you indulge me with one more, please? I also think it would be reasonable, both of us, as Christine pointed out, I mean, time will be of the essence that night, that perhaps you think in terms of public comment when the response from the workshop is received from the attorney, or from the attorney and input from Main Revenue Services, and you've digested it, that then you would have an open session where people could make public comments, but not that evening, not at that workshop, to school the law. Because if it's never, I think that feels very unvia to many people. But I also respect that in that setting it would be very difficult. So rather than a never-ever, perhaps a upfront when we have processed and digested the professional input we are seeking from the law firm and from Main Revenue Services, and digested it as the elected assessors amongst yourselves, that perhaps there could be some questions.
We'll need to come back and figure out how we proceed from there.
Yes.
And I think sometimes we jump before we can actually digest everything that's been said.
I agree with that.
Include not.
Yeah, sometimes we need that to
So at the moment?
And just one perspective comment. What we have now from Parker appraisal, it's some parameters and trio. So we have a black box where you plug in numbers that are on the property cards, which aren't defined, and the number gets spit out. There's nothing we can do with that.
So for the for the 25th, we will not have direct public comment. People may submit questions in writing. Those questions may or may not be answered at that moment.
But they will be answered?
But they will be answered. And there will be, at the later dates, the opportunity for public comment.
Is it appropriate to have that public comment at the following select board meeting?
I don't know.
February 1st?
I don't know, because we don't know how quickly or slowly responses will be made.
It's just, we have a cutoff on the February 28th. And so we can't really delay this communication process, because our commitment requires us to respond by the 28th. So we need to expedite this process. So that's, that's why I don't want to, not, I don't want to put it off and then all of a sudden fall off the timeline. It's well, we all know. And that's just an unfair response, which doesn't give them a chance even go and appeal from that perspective as well. So we need to set a timeline.
Well, then we run, we run the risk of not having all the questions answered, and otherwise, I guess that would be okay.
As a practical answer, Madeline, you are not going to have any more information now on the 28th of February than you do now.